It's on top of the agenda. Do you just like allegiance and then go to table? Because you have an appropriate agenda.
What did I say?
Yes, we are seeing all of this. Who would be led by. I was like.
You're just.
You want that. Okay. And two. But thank you. Now we can go back. I don't. I'm sorry, we seem like we're out of what we should be in this order. We have to move the agenda, but I'm asking you to move. F before D. Or actually moving in. Before it, it should have been A, B. F. I don't know why this is. Okay. It's. So I even, uh, I would like to do the agenda with the caveat that we will be not having a regular session. We will be getting funding, financial, communication. Um, so. Vote by Daniel Bailey. And win in favor. Now let's go to the twenty-two, twenty-three school district budget here.
So look for library. There might be Dowsky. No update. And then six-two-six, two-two-seven.
Uh, so I just wanted to start with, uh, we have a sale. We just had the summer with all of our different things. And we did both. The key pieces that came out of that was purpose, pride, action. Uh, and Allison, uh, our kickoff meeting, um, really highlighted finding your purpose. And so I just wanted, as a business manager, I'm not in the classroom. So it's a great part to make sure that, you know, remembering the why. And so I have a couple of pictures of, um, remembering that we're doing it because it's a student class. We're bringing in for the support staff, for the faculty, we're bringing for the teachers, we're bringing for the building ground. And then also our administration. And then I have a picture of my daughter in there, uh, just a reminder of, and so making sure that we are keeping in mind all of our bases. And everybody has all of this. So that was my purpose of why. When I'm looking at things with numbers in the budget. Uh, so how does district fund purpose? What it all comes down to, and we had a conversation a little bit earlier, is about. Um, so this is the driving force behind this is to determine how much you can spend. Uh, and so I wanted to just talk about a couple of different pieces in this revenue limit worksheet. So this is just that I tried to make it a little bit easier to understand. The revenue limit is you have two essential buckets. You have, uh, what come from the state. And then which is called data consolidation aid. And then you have the money that's coming out of the local taxes for your taxpayers. So what, what creates the amount that you have for your revenue limit is based on your membership? And then what your purpose of funding is. And then with that revenue limit, that's where that equals out your equalization aid and your property taxes, like I said. So in a lot of times, uh, districts are more heavily, uh, property rich, um, like ours with, uh, all the businesses that we have. We receive less data aid from, um, the state. So we have to put that our taxpayers, as I mentioned, bring in, um, the additional work that we have. Um, and now that, so like I said, the people enrollment is a big piece. Um, where that is counted is our third Friday in September and then our second Friday in January. So what that is, is that we are counting the students, um, in the classroom. But it's not just a, a one-to-one comparison. Um, you have to look at, is it a, a child that is, uh, open enroll? Is it, is it a kindergartner? They're not considered a full FTE. So when we look at how many students we have in our district, it does not necessarily equal the number of, uh, memberships, if it's called. But, um, that's the driving piece of what, uh, part of our funding is, how much.
I do have a question on that. If a kid is not in school that day. Are they still counted even though they're not in school? They are absent that particular.
Yep. So you're able to count it if they were there the day before or the day after. Um, so if somebody is gone for a week.
Even though they may have been here for the full school year. No one gets sick. Thirsty.
Yeah. Uh, and so the next piece is, uh, the people enrollment. So if you look at, uh, it's always going to be a three-year rolling average. So our, uh, average, uh, membership was nine oh six in twenty-twenty. It was eight ninety-five in twenty-twenty-one and eight ninety in twenty-twenty-two. So a lot of things to keep, keep in mind with that is that we had pandemic. Um, and so there was a lot of people that chose homeschooling. And, uh, just based off of, uh, just registration, it looks like our numbers are going to go up. They're not going to be a other decline. But again, we'll be able to know, uh, where we stand after the third Friday counting to November. Uh, this is just a, uh, uh, piece I wanted to put in here and I'll post this slideshow, um, after the presentation. Is, uh, just being able to really, I, I know a lot of types of taxpayer get their, their bills. They see like, oh, I'm, I'm paying all this amount towards, for schools and thinking like that, but calling like no way to go up. Uh, but it's really important just to realize the difference between what is actual that equalized value versus the excess value. Very different pieces. Uh, and so we, what we're waiting on is, um, in October, we will get a, uh, value, uh, from. So that's why we can't set our tax levy until October, because we have to find out what are our property values going to be. And those things can really drive how we fund things, because if we are going to receive less funding, then we have to fund it for help. Uh, this is just a historical overview of, uh, just showing what our levy is written. Uh, we have, uh, last year, we have a little bit smaller levy, um, than in fall of twenty-twenty. So again, that really is permanent, like there's not a set way to know what our, our levy will be until we know where revenue limit is going to be, what we're going to get.
What is the red and the blue? Sorry, I can't see.
Sure. So, um, the, the red is the state value and then the blue is our.
The, the state average, you mean? For property values?
Um, for the tax rate.
Tax rate.
Uh, and then this is also, um, the profit. So when they're looking at the property value, you're also looking at what the cost is per member, per student. So our value of what we pay or what we receive for, for people is higher than, um, the state average.
So where the blue line?
Okay.
Yeah, where the blue line.
Um, the next piece was the pride. Um, so again, this is one of those pieces that when I'm looking at all the different things that we're funding is, what are our staff? What are our students? What are people taking pride in? And so I just wanted to highlight it like the, the spelling bee and then just being in the classroom, uh, with kids in there reading Plato and, uh, the March ball. So just how much pride, like the one little guy at the end, he was so excited, it didn't fall apart when he looked at it. Uh, so this is just, uh, the numbers. And, oh, Fund Ten, which in our general fund, this is probably the biggest portion of where it comes from. So in this, it's going to encompass the majority of our salaries and benefits. Uh, so in there, I just wanted to highlight, um, this is the historical for the last, uh, three years. Four years, well, three years, then projected for the upcoming year. Uh, I just kind of wanted to give an overall screenshot of the, so the blue is what it was in twenty nineteen, twenty. The orange is twenty-twenty-one. The, uh, gray is twenty-one, twenty-two. And then the yellow is what I'm projecting for twenty-two, twenty-three. And again, that's just for the salaries, the benefits, contracted services. So that's if we have, uh, people come in, um, or any of that professional development, and then, um, the cost is applied. So again, you also notice that, you know, in the past two years, costs were down. But again, we were not, like last year was the first year, we were back in. And then I also wanted to just show this is just another way of looking at it, just because of salaries and benefits make up such a large portion of our budget. And so there was an increase in the funding. Um, the other thing that I wanted to point out is that Fund Ten had an increase in salaries and benefits this year, because we moved Summer Academy into Fund Ten. In prior years, Summer Academy was in Fund eighty. So it even though it looks like we spent more in salaries and benefits in the general fund, it's because we moved, um, all the Summer Academy costs into the general fund. Uh, and the reason being is because, uh, in the past, it was in Fund eighty, which is considered community ed. Uh, because if you wanted to charge any fees for any other classes, but if by moving it into Fund Ten, we're going to be able to count, um, that membership. Um, it's not again, how many students attended Summer Academy? It's only going to be a smaller percentage, so maybe like fifteen that will be able to count. But fifteen times the amount, two hundred thousand that we get for, for people that stuff. So, uh, is it worth it to keep it in Fund eighty or to get the, the funding that we would get for the membership? So, um, we moved the expenses into Fund Ten. But overall, you'll notice that, um, a percentage is pretty consistent of all the overall cost of what we're spending with salaries. Uh, the next piece, I kind of wanted to separate this out. This is the fixed expenses. So this is things like transportation, gas and electric. So I kind of wanted to just be able to show, those are the things that we really don't have any control over the cost. Um, and they're with the other services that we have to provide. Uh, so in, uh, the blue is the transportation, the orange is the gas and the gray is the electric. Uh, so next year, um, you know, with the cost of gas and energy in general, we're facing a pretty big jump with that. And again, it's a similar thing. We're just showing the percentage of usage over the last three years and what it says that it's still, uh, percentage there. Fund twenty-one, um, so this is not part of the tax levy, but it is still something that we, uh, we have a budget for. So what Fund twenty-one is, that, uh, any donation or fundraising that's done within the district. So anything that, um, any of our curriculum clubs or the foundation or the PTO, any of those different groups, they go into Fund twenty-one. And it works differently because you can carry any money that fundraised in Fund, Fund twenty-one over to the next year. Um, and any other fund of, uh, a budget, you're not able to carry it over. So in Fund Ten, if we, um, don't spend it all, it goes into fund balance, but it, you can't keep it necessarily in the same spot. But in Fund twenty-one, if a club raises five thousand dollars in twenty-one, twenty-two, they're able to carry over that five thousand dollars to twenty-two, twenty-three. GPI has really strict guidance about that. Um, in the past, it was in kind of a, a Fund sixty account, and so you weren't really able to track the revenue and the expenses. In the last two years, they've, uh, required districts to move it over to Fund twenty-one, because you are required to show your revenue and expenses. And really, they want you to, if, if you're charging a student for a club or activity, you want them to be able to utilize what they're paying in that fee in that year. So you don't want students to be paying, you know, a twenty-five dollar athletic fee or whatever the case is, and not being able to, to utilize whatever they're paying for. So, um, just having that guidance there. Uh, the next piece is Fund twenty-seven. Uh, so this is our special education. Uh, so this is always going to be, um, uh, it's something that at the end of the year, whatever you pay, that you are not, uh, your revenues. You will have to do a transfer from Fund Ten to Fund twenty-seven. And so GPI, GPI requires you to meet, um, what's, to a maintenance of effort. What that means is that districts cannot go below a certain amount from the prior year for what they're spending for specialized students. Um, and the reason they do that is because they don't want you to be able to say, oh, I'm going to spend two million on special ed and then supplement a million on it following year. Uh, because you want to make sure that you're meeting needs of students. So you're always required to meet, uh, maintenance of effort or minimum threshold, uh, with, uh, specialized. So this year, uh, with our new director, Kelly, uh, we're doing a lot of, uh, overhaul with the specialized budget, I would say. And just looking at how are we utilizing it? What are the sources that we're, uh, bringing in? Like, uh, we have grants and, uh, just different funding sources that we have. What are the, the things that teachers need? So Kelly has just been doing a lot of talking with our staff and figuring out what are professional development opportunities? What are the resources? What are the different things that, um, teachers need in the classroom? Uh, or also to, to grow in their professions a little more and more. Um, and then figuring out what do they need and how do we take it? So is it things that are going to come out of grants? It is something that's going to come out of the general fund. So it's a conversation that we're, we're having right now. So what we have budgeted for twenty-two, twenty-three is at least the minimum of what we need to meet maintenance of our first year. Uh, next piece is our debt payment in Fund thirty-eight. Um, so this is set by DTI. We have a debt repayment schedule that we always have to follow. So this is, um, the information that's in DTI. So one of the different things that we have to look at when we get our valuation is, um, you know, are there different things that we could potentially do to, uh, impact the mill rate? Because we want to keep that steady, but also what is the best thing that for the district to do long-term? Um, to make sure that we're with no additional state funding, that we're going to be able to, uh, maintain teacher salaries and give our, give increases and be able to just need the cost that we need without the additional funding. Um, so it's, a lot of districts, um, do what's called a debt season, um, so sometimes you're paying debt. So it's one of the things that we're looking at, when having somebody come in, um, next month to talk and just talk about, uh, just different pieces and how that impacts and what additional funding that's going to be of the district in the next few years. Uh, Fund fifty is our food service. So this is our prior year, it was, um, quite a bit lower. Um, the cost for, uh, just food in general has gone up just because of that is the market we're in right now. Um, food service companies all over the state are just struggling to get the supplies they need, it's just not commodity up there. Um, so in prior years, the food service balance was significantly lower. Um, but we also were spending more, but we're also receiving a lot more. So last year, we had a much higher spending compared to your back person again. But we also received a higher reimbursement rate, uh, from the, the, from the Fed. Uh, so this year lunches are not free. Um, uh, so family will have to complete the free and reduce application. Um, but the reimbursement rate will still be there. So, um, it's one of the pieces, like we're going to be offering breakfast and, uh, lunch. So, uh, just different things that, you know, at the end of the year, we really don't want to have a big amount left in Fund fifty. Uh, so we, we want to be able to show that we're going to spend that CPI, otherwise it looks like it's saying, why are you sitting on twenty thousand dollars in money? So, um, now that we'll have a year back in with paid lunches and just looking at all the different pieces of, are there different things that we can fund for students? Um, just making sure that everybody has what they need. The last one is our Fund eighty, which is our community ed. Um, so what this means is, um, our third building that we have for Good Hope, which is where our, um, fundamental heights are taken here. We have a high school, um, a lot of different organizations rent out from our building and those expenses went through, uh, Fund eighty. So one of the things that we have to work through is our auditors, also being able to show our expenses in Fund eighty. So, um, for example, like we have a pool that's in our building, but it's utilized quite a bit by the community for swimming lessons, like with Nicolay, uh, people renting it out. Uh, so there's very strict guidelines of what you can put into Fund eighty, um, but then also just being able to show that, um, uh, whatever we're spending in there is being in the community. Uh, so we have, uh, pretty steady compared to last year of what we're going to be budgeting, um, just because we are looking to have some big work done, um, based on our analyst group plan. Um, so if you opt to, when you are setting this levy, uh, you can't just say, I want to take three hundred thousand dollars out of Fund eighty and put it into Fund Ten. There's only certain ways that you can move that. Uh, so that's again, one of those things where you're looking at expenses is how are you coding it? How are you utilizing that spend? Is this something that we can put in to fund it versus Fund Ten? So expenses that are going for things like Good Hope, uh, those are, will be Fund eighty because the community has. Um, the last piece is the passion. Uh, and this was, I just wanted to highlight the theme, uh, curriculum is coming in. Uh, and I know that Jen Clark is very excited. She's going to be, uh, doing a lot with, um, scholars, be able to, uh, have visual art classes and then being able to figure out what are the opportunities that we can do to improve our district itself and our school itself. Um, and they're just really excited to be in the genius lab at the Grand East Bay. Uh, we have a lot of generous funding from the foundation. Um, and just being able to also, um, utilize the upper spaces that we've started and, um, just creating spaces in general that, uh, can reach out to the community. Uh, the other piece that I wanted to highlight was our tech head. Um, if you ever have a chance to go upstairs, um, they kind of did overhaul and, uh, we built, um, a lot of the space in there. He put, he built, um, wood counters and just completely renovated the space. And, uh, that was a lot from donations from Snap-on Tool and then also with the help, um, from Nicolay's peer students. Uh, so the district was just being like, they were able to, uh, have tables that wrap around laps. And, um, also to computer the different software for students to really be able to, like, to tech out of education. Uh, and then the last piece that I, I thought our district is really embracing with, with passion is our rental health. Uh, and so a couple of different pieces, um, that are on there are, were up there. So, um, again, this is just things that we've just preliminary have done. A lot of this is a conversation that we're meeting with our, um, FSC team, to get input from our teachers. Um, it just gives a little bit more detail about what are the requirements that we have for after funding. Um, but it's getting a lot of feedback from, um, Kelly with the director as she meeting with, uh, teachers and, uh, uh, with teachers about, um, how to, to utilize those words and then what are the needs that teachers need, what are the needs that students need? Um, and just making sure that we are allocating it to the. That was the last one. So the next, oh, sorry. So the next step is, um, the third Friday count. And then in, at the end of October, uh, we'll certify that, uh, or the levy. And, uh, then we'll also have our, be able to have a detailed budget that I'll turn forward, just showing where the different things that we've, uh, budgeted and just looking at.
Can we get a slideshow?
Yeah, I'm going to post it before that.
I have a few baseline questions, just for my, my education. So, because I want to make sure I'm reading this right. So when I looked at your summary, I just, I'm, I'm figuring out that it's like close to seventy percent of our budget goes to self and benefits, right? So it's seven point six million plus three point salary plus benefits. Got it. And then, um, I wanted to make sure I understood this right. So we are losing like over a million dollars to open enrollment and vouchers, right?
So open enrollment, um, they, they adjusted the spend that they can't remember not to hand. But, um, we get charged that same amount for open enrollment out, but we also receive, and, uh, enrollment, uh, we get revenue for that. So we actually end up having a higher revenue for open enrollment.
So this seven hundred odd thousand dollar number, is that revenue in?
Note that to revenue.
Oh, but there's also another number that, that's not on here, that's revenue in.
And so one of the pieces that hopeful, which is time track, uh, opening moment, uh, uh, with the third Friday, that's one of the big pieces. You have to be able to show which is the opening moment in and open moment out. Uh, and so then after the third Friday, I'll be able to be, okay, we can, so having better opening calling in. Uh, it's one of the things that I'm going to dive into, which is looking at, are we having a consistent, like, increase of students opening in versus opening calling out?
But right now, we're in that game.
Yep.
On that, okay.
Um, the other big event that we have this year, um, which we also have no control over is the voucher program. So if students, uh, choose and their kids to go to a different school, like, uh, so in, uh, two thousand and fifteen, it was about thirty-one thousand. In this last year, it was three hundred and thirty-one thousand. So we have no control over that expense. Um, and it's really hard to budget for it because there's no cap in the amount that they can charge. So.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Once. But we'll move on. Thank you, Lindsay. We are going to. If it's a agenda, me and I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Vote by Daniel Bailey. Second by Dan Wayne. Any discussion? All in favor? Of course. Great, we're good. The super and end report, we're going to start with the executive summary.
So the executive summary just outlines, um, items B and C. So I'm trying to, go ahead. So I'm, I'm not going to go too deep because I know that, uh, Jenica is going to talk a bit about this later to the school's update. But just wanted to give an update on some of our sale work, our hundred day planning kickoff this week. Uh, it's, it's really exciting to have the alignment, um, across the district around some of our themes, our areas of focus this year. So we've got our two goals that we've shared. Um, the first one about increasing literacy and math proficiency for all students, reducing achievement gaps. And then our second goal, which we're really hitting hard, because we know it's the basis for the first goal. And that's to have that safe and productive culture for learning. So that's how we're starting the year. It's all about classroom culture. It's all about classroom climate. It's all about behavior pieces we're putting in place. And, uh, we've taken the next step today. Our job did an amazing presentation with the staff around the high leverage practices that we're going to be looking for in classrooms. Uh, being completely transparent around why these practices were chosen, how we're going to be looking for them, that this is a system view. This isn't about individual classroom teachers. It's just assessing as a system if these practices are, are happening in the classroom. And that's going to culminate in a community event that we'll talk more about, um, in November, so that, uh, teachers and staff and students can highlight those practices, how those changes are looking in the classroom. Um, this is all part of our hundred day plan, which only takes us to November. It's kind of hard to believe that we did all that planning this summer and a hundred days we're going to hit at the beginning of November. But then we have another, um, professional development as a team. So we'll go back, assess like where were we successful, what things worked, what things did we not accomplish? And then draft our next, our next plan. Um, so it was just really nice having staff back today. We were talking a lot about the why, which is, you know, a little bit of what we talked about in our first meeting today. Um, the passion, purpose, passion and pride around being, being a teacher, because we all went into education, um, for those reasons. We're pretty lucky that we can see our purpose every single day, um, in education. So we talked about just re-centering that theme all year long. We're going to do, um, continue to, like, the professional development of the buildings. You know, all talks about those goals and those themes. As a district, we talked about those goals and those themes, professional development is aligned to those goals and themes. So we're just excited to put some structures and processes in place to talk about continuous improvement. And then to hold ourselves accountable and check it, make sure things are working. And so eventually, some of the things that I'll be bringing to as a board, so we're going to be talking about, like, district, our district plan, our building plans. What are the exact strategies we're putting in place? How are we checking that they're working? What data are we checking, checking in on? So those are some of the next pieces that we'll be putting together in the first couple of months of the school year, tying all of that to. Tying all of that to. So it's pretty exciting. I don't want to go too deep because I know that we're going to, you've got that professional development plan later in the agenda of August. And that will have most teams, most pieces of time. You guys have my presentation attached. That was what I went through after Tamika and Carla left Tuesday morning and then.
We don't have to answer this now, but I was curious because these are, we get into a little bit deeper later. But how we're going to increase literacy and math outcomes by five percent. So I don't think we can begin.
So I would say our first steps are going to be those four high leverage practices. So we've created a look for document. So those are like, we're asking all staffs to implement those practices in other classrooms. And so we'll be like, things like see if it's posted, you know, clarity around collaboration between special and regular. So I can share those four.
Okay.
Strategies. Actually, are you going to share that?
Those aren't in your.
Okay, so Jenica can share the exact strategies. I just want to go.
Oh.
And I would say that the biggest focus the first couple of months is on that culture climate in classrooms.
Yeah.
And like the students feel safe, staff feels safe. We have a positive, strong culture to impact. So that's the focus for the first hundred days.
Awesome.
Yeah, I don't want to go too much into it because. It's also.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll get back to it just in a second. We have other questions coming back to you.
When you first introduced this, there was like a document that you guys were working on in the team, which is like your actual hundred day thing. And we're like, and I'm tracking stuff. I'd be interested just purely to prove that when I went in, I don't know.
It's a draft, but you guys could see them. Yeah, sure, anytime.
So what I would suggest you do is put it in a link into. Do we have an update? I think it was a weekly update two, two weeks ago, but it should be linked there.
Whenever you.
And when you're talking about cold winter climate, you're talking about the new. Again, both kind of policies.
But some of it is also how are we going to use second step? How are we going to use our student services team during collaborative team meetings to help staff implement strategies around SEO? How, like, there's lots of different pieces, the character pieces of different schools. This is a big year for structure. Structure. Another structure, word chart. So I brought the word chart to, is it F and P? Yes. And so I got some really good feedback. We talked about just some of the district wide staff. And so one of the adjustments I made from the first iteration is that you'll see. Our staff that are across multiple buildings, so our social worker, some of our therapists would be directly reporting to the director, especially in student services. You'll notice there's dotted lines and there's red lines essentially. That's really tied a lot to the evaluation process, taking things off, some of those pieces in the background. And that's why they would be directly connected to the principals. But then, of course, Jenica is going to be supporting professional development and the coaching for coaches. And the Yale coordinator, gifted and talented library media in the same way that Kelly would provide that support for our SST team and our special education staff. So really, those are the dotted lines. They're just indicating that because they're not directly in the building with those staff on a daily basis. It's a different level of support than the building principals will provide them.
So dotted line is. Support other than direct supervision. So red lines means those are the people doing the evaluations.
And it's not to say that there couldn't be a collaboration. If the principal said, hey, I want some support from Jenica on coach evaluations, she would provide that, but there may not be the trust.
Did, have you solicited feedback from, like, so you know, I'm most curious about the director special ed sort of not directly supervising the counselors? And I understand the reasoning to, to an extent that the counselors are in the building. So the principal of that building, perhaps best knows how to utilize that counselor. Although I would argue, I would want a director of special ed to understand what's happening in both buildings at all times. And be able to direct the counselors just as easily as a principal and for them to be in collaboration. So, but I'm curious if you solicited feedback from the counselors or the special ed team or psychologists. About, like, about this.
So I guess I would, I haven't. I guess I would say that what the director would do is coach and work with the principal. Or I'm about to, do you know what I'm saying? It's like utilize the team. But I also know for an example, like we were just talking today about collaborative team meetings versus just example. And so every other week, grade level teams, and they want to make sure that then social worker, the counselor. So then when they're doing problem solving meetings and that's all being planned between Kelly and.
And then Kelly has separate meetings planning, how you, how you utilize collaboration. I guess my hope would be that the counselors, psychologists, et cetera, that there is some, that there's clarity for them around like, okay, you're my door supervisor. If I'm having an issue with the way I'm utilized or not utilized, like, am I going to our special ed? You know what I mean? Yeah, so like, I think, I think Carla and I touched on this too in terms of like, like, they need an advocate, right? Like, and so who is their advocate?
So that was, and that's Kelly. So they have reg, they'll have regular meetings and department meetings. Other than where they can express concern about things. Okay.
And then that would be a conversation that would all happen. And she would hypothetically, ideally, Kelly would be the resident expert with the lead voice on how FPL staff are being utilized and our seal training.
In the same way that Jennifer would be around.
And then, sorry, one more. So the, the principals will be, this isn't sort of an evaluation question, but the principals will be providing evaluations for the parent professionals and support staff.
So that's kind of a layered approach because they give us teachers, you're getting feedback with the professionals. Okay. Like special ed teachers are going to give principals feedback and fill out rubrics to help inform some of that. Because they work with them so directly. And that's not really a word chart.
Well, they, so like a parent professional support staff in classrooms.
But they.
Principals will utilize teachers for evaluation.
So this would be more just a direct, like, I'm taking this. Okay. You know what I mean there? And this stuff.
Okay. All right. Okay.
One, that's a couple of calls. Are all those positions that are on, one, be careful how we put, these are not specifically position or just titles. Is there functions? In other words, some of these aren't built currently. Are they, I mean, like, do we have a bus service person?
Oh, so what that's indicating is that the director of business and operations is our contact. And we need for the bus company, the food service company.
Right. I mean, but so we don't have though, an actual position for, for example, like the function of HR really falls, well, you know, to Lindsay. But Lindsay is not our HR professional, right? So. No, but not titled.
Right.
Not a title. That's just a job.
Definitely saying, so it, it, so this is about functions, not specific positions.
Yeah, I think. Because they have built our benefits payroll in the first.
Yeah.
And I'm conscious payable to the person. And this one section is mapped all into one. So I think it's both. Right, so, so that one box is functional. Oh.
Because yeah, those two are none of the first. Human resources insurance.
Right. But I think you put it out of stride, those are the things that are, choose our function. But, but I, I can see Andy's point, like, if I saw this work chart, you know, and I'm like, I want to talk to the insurance person. Because I see it on there.
Right. So someone might.
But maybe we say. It's.
And some, really, this is to expand to things that you're talking about, who to go to for what. And you know, some of those.
You're being asked for approval?
Yes, yes.
Do we have a motion to approve? District board. Someone. Slipped by Danielle, second by Ben Win. I'm going to go into the audience. Audience, do you have any visitor comments on the board? I know, or if you're. We ask the audience, not just because you're here. So she feels happy that she is under people that we just don't look at her and tell her, are you doing what you want? What do you think? Okay. Anyone? So I want to. Go anyway. If you're done with that, go back to discussion. Put it in the board.
Well, I just want to make one quick comment, which is that, you know, I looked at this and I think that there are two things that I liked about it. One is it carries through this kind of flattening of field, so to speak, that we did. Making sure that we had a more horizontal organizational chart into vertical. I think that that really was done intentionally. And something that clearly being built on well here to ensure that message were empowering to the job to be to the whole district again. And it's made a more direct reporting to each person in those positions. So I think it carries through, started to, the chart as it is right now is actually a lot more clear. And there's a lot of problems to get put into it. So I, I think this is very workable. For me, the big test ultimately is, does it work in person for attendant and our administrative team? And everything that I'm hearing that the industry suggests, and so I appreciate that. And I all think it's time to, you know, it's outdated. So thank you for the work on that.
I'd love to hear how it worked in a year.
That's what I was going to say. Like the dotted lines and then solid the feedback from the county, you know, some of these folks.
And this is, I think, a board board chat or the board chat that I've seen that changes and evolves. So it'll probably change next year to improve or add somebody or take someone off depending on how old each is. Let's do a vote all in favor of approving this board chart.
All right.
Policy. She appears five to zero. We are at for number four, new business. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, school district budget and school district tax levy, I guess, for the fact.
It should affirming, I mean, really, I don't know if it's affirming anything, but you're not affirming, are you certified as a tax levy?
But. It's just informational, which is kind of what we did before, but it's not the budget. So we're just kind of go and move on and then we. Yeah, it's what she just said. We are going to.
Okay. I just remember it being read out loud like. Don't later, actually.
It's later.
When it's actually.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I'm trying to make sure there was two B with the short term borough. That was part of the.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Want to make sure she has the money. Okay. So four B of the table. Kind of a code for regular athletic.
So I talked with Mr. Birmingham, the athletic director. And he kind of reviewed what went well, what we need improvement on in the past year. And then also just one of the things that we want to look at for the future. And so the this side of the month or even individual activities still in the climate that's above by particular amounts within our area of districts. But we also really wanted to make sure that we appreciate the staff that do this. So we, we kept the payment the same. There are a couple of them is opening. And so we are definitely sharing that stat, so let them know that they're interested. The big change that came in this year was I was talking with Mr. Birmingham was just having another person that potentially be there to help support. Just because of the last or one of the people. And so we, a lot of districts in the area have their principals that does this role. And so I talked with Mike and he was on board with that. And so we talked with Mr. Crager and we brought it to finance personnel while adding co-director. And the, like I said, laid out the combination with them and Mr. Crager was very excited. One of the big reasons is we wanted to be able to bring in Parkway to be able to offer more programs for the elementary agents and younger kids. So the two of them are been very excited and looking forward to, to doing that and just helping to share the support between the two. But that's just. So I just been asking for the approval of the type of for the corporate given.
And up with in all the coaching.
Everyone on the list.
I have questions about specific amounts. Should this have been discussed in the executive session?
Depending on if we're talking about different amounts for a particular individual or if it's just for the.
Yeah, because my only.
Wait, wait, so if it's a position, then I, we may want to, before you even ask the question.
Yeah.
We might just want, no, no, I'm not, we might want to table it for the evening, the way you think sometime, you know, direct to one.
So the amounts did not change from last year.
Well, there's a new, you're asking for a new stipend, that's code.
Which I'm trying to clarify what it is.
But then the stipends for the coaching positions did not go up?
No, they did not because you were significantly higher than you have been. And Mike and I both talked about it and he was comfortable with that.
So, yeah. Yeah, my, my concern is like, because from my experience, and I know my experience would be different, but you know. You know, I don't know if you asked someone here or not, but like, when I coached, I put in. I don't know, two hundred hours, I ended up coming out to like twelve bucks an hour. You know, and so I, I know you don't coach for the money. But it also should be fair. So like, my only concern is, you know, when you have some of the titles here, I just get, I'm just curious how much time they're actually putting in. And so I don't know if that was put into the.
So we kind of a theory to all of the cultures and all of the mentors and what we asked was, how many times you meet with kids? How long are you meeting with them and how many kids are present?
Yeah.
Just because it helps that gauge, like, okay, if you're meeting once every three months, is that going to be a different amount than from the other people? So we gathered that information from them. Yep.
And everyone on this list is getting paid more than like fifteen bucks an hour?
Yeah, because a lot of them is, you know, they, like, coaches for, like, practices are like every day. And then there's like different people and stuff like that. But sometimes it was also different about the number of kids that are. So we tried to look at, okay, maybe is it, you're meeting more frequently, but it's less kids or like that. Okay.
Is it possible for us to save the executive content for later? They just.
So my question is. And why would this be executive when we're talking about positions, not people, positions? And when, how much they make, that was.
Yeah, the names.
But this is, this, that is not a, if you want to talk about, we're not talking about. If you're talking about a particular increase in a particular.
But they know who the certain politicians.
It doesn't matter if you know by hand, it's like, we're not going to say it out. It doesn't matter if you know by hand, it's like, we're not gonna say it out loud, but if you want to talk about in general what it is.
Well, anyway, not that, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I don't believe you, but I would just like to see like how it was calculated, just because.
So like, like, I just use the amount some part of the years that can make any changes. So when I had the conversation with Mike, is we looked at what are, what are they gonna change? And he's gonna be the person that knows what time and and depending on the goals and needs, because I wanna make sure that would be fair to whether paying them. So my guidance came from him.
Okay.
He was comfortable with where it was at, he knows the coaches, he's had multiple contributions, that's why we also asked this question. But I, I did not make any changes from last year to this year, so how they were determined prior year or not?
It went up last year. I remember we had a conversation that things were very low and we almost, I think we even doubled some of them because it was so low. I mean, we were not paying our coaches or anything correct. And then, and then that was either last year or right at the end of the year before. It was the year before, not last year, year before that they raised them up.
Thank you, interesting, just to your point, maybe to ask them after this year to sort of assess how many hours they put into it. And then that's more information for you to understand what the pay comes out to. You can have that data you see might exist. Or asking it in a way that doesn't narrow straight.
Or ask what is part of the time sheet.
But, oh, I think I have generic questions, like.
I do too. Hold on a go. Or ask that, let's finish in, in the sense of maybe asking someone to do a time sheet when they are working on it. Say what they are, I know, and you told me at one point you have to do a time sheet of what, how much time.
Yeah.
You put on there and it actually helps to understand what you're saying.
Right.
So maybe we could do that, should see what's. All right, let's probably come first and then we'll vote anyhow.
So I, I love that we're funding, that we're paying teachers for this stuff. I actually didn't know we paid twenty-seven, that makes me very happy, because teachers are doing amazing things and all that. I wondered about some missing items. I know that. I don't know who did it last year, Black History Month. I had hoped to see when I looked through this list of stipends for whoever is running Black History Month, and that's not on here. And then I know there was a, there's a Black Student Union now, and I don't know if that teacher or teachers who are running that ought to be getting a stipend.
So, yeah, I think those are the true programs, or it's kind of with the young as well, because those are, we want to fall under, like Birmingham. So they are, no, because it's running through one health facility under the principal. So those would come through towards, so I can definitely check.
Oh, so those would come through her principal's budget? So we don't have a way to see that?
Well, no. It's, it's, no, exactly, it's still considered to come up. But the stipend is, is not the same as athletic or sports, like, we have the Black History Month, and then there's also going to be one of Mr. Williams is gonna be.
Pearls for teenage girls.
Yep, pearls, pearls, yeah.
Oh, those are different ones where.
What is no place for major and council?
Those are, okay, aren't those co-curricular stuff, just like these things?
They're, they're not, they're, you can club the activities, not that they're co-curricular, it's like athletic. So the co-curriculars that are, that have clubs that the teams are running are like falling under mid-year. So she's the one that she and I work with about the stipend for things like Black History Month and no place for hate, Mr. Birmingham.
No Place for Hate is on here, and so is Student Council. So. Is there, are you, are you precluded from including, from including like the black, like on here?
No, I, I, like, I literally didn't do it on our list and I asked, I asked very quick, so they might have just got it.
Okay.
So I can.
Because I would, I would like to see Black History Month teachers, BSU teachers, the Pearls teachers, the people who are doing that. I think they deserve to be on the, the stipend.
And this, it's only, like, they will have different ones that'll come through over here. There will be different like organizations that are going to throw in here. So these are just the ones that we know as of right now, and so, yeah, like the Black History Month and the Pearl, like, well, that will add.
Okay, awesome. And then I think Danielle had asked about, like, fear. That was another one, I was like, should that be on here?
Or is that for the high school? I was noticing some.
I, I know, I thought that was.
That's what I thought.
Okay. I have a question.
Okay. Oh, and then I had one last question. I, I don't know if we're talking about the, the description that was written for the co-curricular director.
Ah, yes, on here.
Yeah, that's right, right. So I just want to share with you what I thought when I read, read this. I love it, and it's great that we're kind of putting down on paper what that person's gonna be doing. I, for me, I would love to see some language in here around equity, about enabling participation of people with different skills and abilities and different backgrounds. And then some, I don't know if it's asking too much, I don't know, you know, but I would love to have some way of monitoring for representation. You know, just because there have been some challenges with that in the past, and I would love to see that we're watching and thinking about and asking our directors to be thinking about those equity issues.
Like students participating.
Yeah, yeah, and, and teaching, you know, just all, all that stuff, to have that lens open and part of this description to say we should be thinking about. You know, you can use a lot of different words, I don't know what that would look like, about enabling participation, about representation and just, you know, being keen to them, to make sure we.
If you wanna make some comments on like different things.
No, I think we do. Yeah, I can think about it, I'm not sure what that would.
Like, if you have a student engagement goal, I think.
Yeah.
People really value the system monitoring student engagement.
So you want me to suggest some language?
Yeah, and I know that Birmingham, Mr. Crager, and he's coming to a board meeting, or talk about communication, communication meeting.
So maybe I did just bring it up with them there.
Yeah.
Or before.
Just talking about their goals to be here.
That's what I'm.
Also, like, different things about how we're communicating, different things to the family.
Yeah.
So I've decided just different things like that, they're gonna come and talk about.
That's what I'm most excited about, because a lot of confusion around extracurriculars in the past, and they, and you know, so having it written down and then talking about a schedule for it. And then having.
Even thinking about what your district, our district plan, I think that's really what's been bothering me.
But it doesn't say in our executive plan set how the co-director's stipend is meant to be, it just says like, it doesn't for the director.
I can write the same, so they're, they're co-directors.
Right, sorry, okay.
And then so Mike's like, from last year, and I looked at what period of the year, and then moving forward in the future, like the amount that we have for.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant distribute, like, it says, like. I'm sorry, now, it's okay, I'll retract the question. Better. But it's just a stipend, it's not salary.
Right.
Yeah, it's like, eventually.
Slaying here. Like annual stipend.
Okay. I don't know, we have the, we give them two options, they can either have a full feed out of that of the year, or they have the option to have half, you know, the summer or half. Like, there are some of them that pay a, a, a lot of different ones, they'll do part of their payment during summer and part of it back to you.
Okay. And I don't know if that's what you're asking, but the goal being for that stipend for the eighty to be the same as what it was before, but obviously what's re-congruent, so.
You know what I mean, in that, but eventually moving forward, it would be.
Oh.
Okay, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I got it, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. My only thing is, I guess I would, I would want to. Can you like ask for approval of this pending addition of, I'd like to see additions of Black History Month, Prospers, or whichever of the BSU. I'd like to see and understand what those are in relation to the other before I would vote to approve it.
Well, I'm gonna, gonna say something.
I just want.
So that, go ahead, set these. Even though they're not on here right now, there is, I give that on here every single week, on, depending on what's, yeah, how it does, am I right? If, yes, so just.
So I, I guess I, right, only because there was holding off, it says, like, for payroll per. Yeah, I mean, at any point, you can bring in any additional.
Right, so what, what I would suggest and what I would hope just to do this now. And get it going, and then anything that is future, or we have added on, put it into either finance, personnel report, or whatever it is. To add into it, and then just put it into a consent agenda, so we can see it, because consent agenda information is there. And then if we have an issue or anyone has an issue with the how or question, we can pull it out of the consent agenda. But if you don't have any question, that's.
Do you think you could have it by September?
Do you want us to?
By our next P?
The additional ones that we missed?
Good, yeah. But wait, you, in S and P, we discussed this.
We can be talking about.
Right, so bring it back into the same.
Okay.
Okay, so the next S and P meeting, we'll hear about the additional.
And then we'll.
And then we can bring it to the, yeah, then we can work out if, if the S and P committee has any questions or any concerns. They can address them there before they bring it to the board and, and correct anything that needs to be before it brings to you.
I just wanna clarify, so when I'm bringing the impossible, the ones that you don't have, you want a little bit more background about how we got.
Right, I think she does.
Probably.
Is that correct, Danielle?
That's fine.
You know what she did?
No.
She couldn't give us information.
That's how they determine.
No, no, she, she wants the information on how they determined it as well.
No, I just wanna see. I'm sorry, I just wanna see what amounts you settle on, so I can just compare and understand. I was moving ahead.
Oh, oh, where did, where did you? Yeah.
In my mind, there's just, you know, the hunt for fidelity to make sure it doesn't get dropped in all the other stuff the guys are doing.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, we've been on here.
No, it's fine, yeah.
I'm good.
I'll go try. If we're gonna put it in here, we're gonna put it in. All right, so do I? I shouldn't even. Yes, we should have had a motion first, I'm making a pop my game, because I have non-practiced running brain. So moved. So, um, let's have a motion to approve. This co-curricular slash athletic type. So moved. Moved by Carla, I'm going to second. Second by. Discussion for the audience, do you wonderful people have anything to say in regards to? We're okay, now we're gonna go to board, beginning before any other discussion, I think Andy has something to say, so go ahead, Andy. Okay, are you making that face? I know that face, he has something to say, so. Oh, but he has a face.
It's not, well, I'm gonna have a point of order after the vote.
Well, then, let's start it now, and if you want a point of order, it's probably gonna be because of what I just did, so you don't wanna have both then do a point for.
It's not about this.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
That's five to zero, so there's no board.
Okay, my point of order, we skipped over four A, and I think that we. I, I, I think that we need to revisit four A and also set agenda item to be, let me explain and just make sure that it's clear what my concern is. First of all, we approved the consent agenda, the four million dollar not exceed amount. Typically speaking, when we approve those. Those amounts, and I mean, I bring it up after the fact, so I'm slow, but I get there. Typically speaking, we have an interest rate that is best by as well potential place that we're going to shop out. I don't remember offhand if you addressed it, I'm not terribly concerned, but A, I just wanted to double check. And I apologize, this, this isn't about the hard work you've done, or what you've done here, but it says four million here, in the executive summary, they gave us six point five million.
Oh, I'm sorry, like, I, when I retaxed, it is four million, that was in, four, forty, the four million is actually a million plus than what we borrowed in your past, based on the cash flow. We wanted to try to have money stayed on, and based on the cash flow analysis, we're, we're fine with the amount of. And I apologize, I, we're not.
And, and I, I wish, bear with me, and, and so the, the rate that you, and, and the moment, I, I don't, but you've, you've gotten the market rate based on our credit.
So we haven't gotten your mouth, but this is just saying that you're.
Opposition, yeah.
So we're, we're using this to go out and actually get, listen, okay. Because that was my next question, which is, this is the budget hearing in August, which steps forward Wednesday. Typically speaking, we approved the spending and we approved the budget in same meeting, and that's how we've done it historically. So when we went through, we did, you know, to not exceed a tactical amount, I went with that because four A is, is approving school district budget, school district levy. And according to the great presentation I did in the executive content. So my understanding to go together like in butter and chocolate at, at both. And, and we, and we skipped over four A without taking a motion to table it as well. And I think that, at the very least. Even if, I, I think that we need to approve the budget.
That one was done in June.
I'm sorry?
That was done in June. Of course, for, for my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I thought we approved it in June. We have to get some other, the last minute stuff, and then we'll do the regular stuff and.
I, I don't need to get rid of her.
But we can do it, if you want, you can put it on the record.
The reason, and, 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 yeah, I mean, I was there, and I mean, I agree, and it did that, and, you know, you also schooled us a lot in the process along the way. And historically, what we've done as district is we've gone back and we have addressed, you know, and we, we've done in June, done in August, done in October. At each point, you know, proving where we are with those adjustments. And to me, I'm just not sure if you're running into a problem by authorizing, you know, at least you to go out and solicit, you know, for bonds, for an amount that. And, I mean, forgive me for not recalling, but I don't know what the amount was based on what we did in June. So maybe we don't need to go back and revisit it, but I feel like two things generally go together, and it's good practice. So I guess my point is, shouldn't we go back and revisit, you know, actually the four A?
I, I don't think, I don't think so, because I under, for what I understood is, and arguably, you know, this is just my thought process. We're not approving anything right now for, especially for the to be. All we're saying is, we give you permission to go and start getting the best deal we can possibly get that won't exceed four million dollars. That's all we're at, where it's not anything set in stone, so that's that first part. And the second part is. We don't, we approved in June, but I don't see what we're doing anything, this is to go over budget. I don't ever remember approving.
We're supposed to have this meeting in August.
Or I.
It's a budget hearing and, and it comes long special, you know, so if we're having a hearing on the budget. I think that's why we've always gone hand, hand in, in proof where it is.
So what are you requesting?
I, I would make a motion to. And, and to re, to revisit four A, or at least go back to four A, and what's properly tabled, if someone wants to table it, I, I think that's, there needs to be motion in the sound.
Okay, let's do it then.
So I'll second his motion to revisit four A. He didn't ask for a vote, he just wanted to.
Just to revisit.
So. So.
Well, she, she made a motion.
Oh, you made the motion?
Well, yeah.
Fine, okay. Discussion, audience. So one, going twice, I'm just trying to stay consistent with our visitor participation highlight, well, highlight. Three. Okay, four, and I would like to, not just board, but Lindsay. And. Ms. Weiss, or, I'm sorry, I should be on the regular. To tell us what the guidance is or what you think we should do for what we need to. I thought. Your recommendation.
No, the guidance.
I, I. Your recommendation on what we have to do.
I think you, the. Hey, I think until we are hooked you for research, I would like to just go with test practice. Okay, and then she can look at.
Okay, so. Okay, so. Okay, vote to revisit. For A, that's their recommendation to make it. All in favor? Five to zero, we don't need to do anything else, um, but I am not going to revisit that until we finish the rest of this. It's gonna be, I'm gonna put it at the last minute, because we have two to three things that we have to go, so I'm going to put it to the. After we're revisiting the budget after the director of operations twenty. Twenty two, twenty twenty three.
Alright, so I'm gonna, um, try to talk about this. So you guys have an executive summary from second session, basically, we all know that we came to a space where we merged the director of building grounds, the finance. Jobs this year, starting in February, after Mr. Beck retired, so then we went through the process of reading. Uh, we kind of just went through it on a trial basis, and then this summer, um, I brought to the building grounds committee, a staff survey that was given to buildings and grounds staff. To gauge their satisfaction with the new structure, along with comparable salaries for just a business manager position, because we didn't have anything to. And so those were included, uh, in board docs, well, discussion that building the grounds, direction I was given from buildings and grounds was then to bring a job description. And salary recommendation and finance personnel, so then we had that discussion of finance and personnel, recommendation for finance and personnels, because this would potentially be a temporary position. Because we're looking at the possibility of some internal staff taking on that role for the following year, that instead of, it wouldn't be salary, it would be a stipend, because that stipend was an absolute good way, if one of our internal staff took the position. So I had originally, um, done a recommendation of a range, and then just for ease, I. Did actual. So that's my recommendation for the stipend for the director of. So it's a one percent.
Next question to crew, I will make question to crew, the stipend for operations for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Oh, second one.
Motion is made by Danielle Bailey, seconded by Andy Franklin. Audience.
There's one thing.
Okay, we have, we're gonna go back to board for discussion.
Well, I just want to say, Lindsay done a hell of a, no, listen, Lindsay's done a hell of a lot of work, uh, and I think that we're saving money, and this is just the right way for us to go, um.
Okay. Well, we're gonna. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Call. Question carries five to zero, now let's go back up to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school board budget. Make a motion for the board to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget, amount of eight million seven hundred forty four thousand one hundred fifty nine dollars nine cents, and also the four to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty three tax levy, about the thirteen million five hundred fifty seven dollars. Oh my god, five hundred sixty seven, thousand one hundred seventy nine dollars. Other adjustment, oh, that's it. But but those two things, that's my motion.
I'll say it then.
Sorry. Moved by Danielle Bailey, seconded by Andy Franklin. Discussion in the audience. Help. Discussion, uh, before, so so I'm, we're just voting on a preliminary approval, right, this is not the final one.
Right, yes.
So we're moving for preliminary.
In the public comment, it states that the adjustments are expected prior to final budget.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Five to zero, motion carries.
I do.
On to department updates, building updates.
Erica. Do you need that? Just discussing, right?
And I can just. Yeah. Um, so there's, you had a executive summary that was shared with you, yeah, the the August meeting dates.
The.
What? I like the call, yeah. This is the lead up, this is the work you do, sort of leading up to the beginning. Right, so I'm just gonna backtrack just real quick, because we did have, um, the prior week, before that, we did have, um, teacher, um, training, so we did have four days of that, and actually, even prior to that. Our new, um, middle school math teachers were all trained at the Math Institute for two days, you know, illustrative math, so they have the opportunity to participate in math. Um, Monday, August fifteenth through Thursday, August seventeenth, we had four days of training for our new staff, um, for E L A training, science training, um, bridges math training, additional illustrative math training. Uh, we met with, um, the partner schools and had an amazing day, some of you were able to take into our lunch, and then, um, they also had an afternoon of training around equity inclusive practices. Can I ask you, who was, who was leading the afternoon, or how, what did that consist of? Um, that's the C G C, so, um.
Which V A G C?
Close in the achievement camp. Um, so we have a new career on the B two with, um, many of the surrounding, um, so, and our very own Grace Becker was, um, one of the presenters, so that was fantastic, when she had the opportunity to do that.
What did she present on?
She presented on, um, how to be inclusive in your classroom, um, so she just gave a lot of different strategies on how to, um, support students. Then we're moving into, um, this week, uh, so we've had a really busy week, um, really laying out, um, our purpose, um, talking about, um. The work we've done all around the summer, um, as a leadership team, sharing out kind of where we're going, writing teachers with clarity around our goals, um, and then. Um, so we started that on Tuesday, and we did have some, um, building level trainings as well, so we sort of, um, practices started, so we had our presenter, um. Sandra, um, sure, Perry Finch was here, um, presenting to Glen Hill staff on restorative practices, we do have two more days planned with her, so in September, we have another date planned with her, and then also in October. So she'll be continuing that work, um, with the Glen Hill staff, um, Parkway also did some training, um, today as well around their culture committee, so they have a group of teachers that have gotten together. Um, and did a training session with the entire staff over at Parkway around, um, like classroom matrix and all of those types of things, and Glen Hill is just doing the same over, um, expectations for students and around the matrices. Um, they've had instructional planning time starting today, um, really looking at that block scheduling, so they had, um, several hours of going through block scheduling, and what does that look like, and how we can support students during that time. There's additional training on that on Monday.
Who's leading that?
Um, Annie, um, and the coaches. So the math coaches, the E L A coaches, and that's young, and then a couple of special education teachers are also involved with, um, work this summer, um, representing. Um, then we'll continue that work on Monday, and then it's kind of embedded throughout the school year during the C S T meetings, um, she schedules her professional learning. Um, we also have a lot of, um, just some of the highlights, I'm gonna do some highlighting, we had some teachers do some work around, um, inclusive practices and supports for care professionals in, uh, P E classroom. So they're doing some presenting on Wednesday, August thirty first, um, we have our new director, who's meeting with care professionals, and we're training with them, um, she's also meeting with, uh. The student support team and looking at, um, second step programming and morning meetings, and and how we can embed some of that work, and provide some supports for classroom teachers, um, for the upcoming school year. She's also meeting for the special education staff as well, um, and doing some, um, training around I E P goals and writing I D Ps and students in classrooms. Um, so I think, and then we have a huge presenter coming in, Shelley Moore, she'll be here tomorrow morning, um, and really kind of talking about how to plan for all students in your classroom, um, so again, we'll be hitting that, you know, hard again.
Oh, she's the mean faced. Mean faced classroom support.
Yep, so she'll be here for the morning tomorrow, um. So those, those are the big. So those are the big highlights of, um, some of the trainings we did, also, uh, training this morning, um, I kind of touched on just, um, the look force and just, you know, really laying out the. The purpose as to, you know, why we're doing some of these things, our focus areas for the year, on providing our staff with clarity around, really, what are supply level strategies that we can utilize, um, this coming school year, that we can really look at some accountability around. And checking and engage as a system, um, how we're doing, then also for, you know, thinking about what P D we might, we we're not moving in in certain areas. Those big focus areas were, um, really looking at having the standard known, the learning intentions known by our students, um, so they know where they're rooming each day, um, so providing that learning target, um, for students. Um, following the instructional frameworks, so, um, just looking at our block schedule, they created a instructional framework for that block schedule, um, in. Um, like bridges and in our E L A, um, curriculum, it's already is in a block schedule, so it really utilized well with that, um, so that was a quick and easy transfer, uh, for staff and illustrative math as well, it's in an eighty minute lesson. Then also, um, making sure that we have like that collaborative planning time and evidence of that, that we are meeting, like our, that we are providing time for our special education teachers and our S S T team, and all of those people at the table, um, when we're doing some planning for students. Um, and providing that time, and Anna did a nice job with the schedule, I know that's the same over at Parkway as well. Um, and then modeling and teaching classroom expectations is another focus area, and habits of character, so really focusing in on classroom culture and building that up, teachers had, um, time to work on, um, creating their their first ten day lessons. Um, for the first ten days of school to, um, to really focus in on some of buildings and those relationships, and getting some of that going, and really focusing in again on most matrix, because we have to teach it in order for them to.
So there, alright, is there an expectation then, that every teacher will be, or we know that every student will be receiving this sort of information around these new matrix behaviors, and we know that they'll all be touched, because that there's an expectation, teachers will go over it.
Are you done, or are you still?
No, I'm. Those were the highlights for the.
For the highlights? I don't know if this works or not, but you're doing all these trainings, and you'll get to the end of the training, I hate surveys, but I think one of the things that you should say is. We have taught all these things, you know, is there something that you're still unclear on, is it something that you 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 feel like we, you might need some extra support? It doesn't mean that you have a full, you know, personal development day, you talk to that one particular person and say, this is how I think evaluations have been doing that extra help, so if they're in the this school, or in the middle school. Anna looks at that and says, wait a minute, I'm gonna take some extra time to talk to this teacher about this, because they are confused, or they need extra support, you don't need to have the whole school do it, because everybody is not in that place, just like we have individual needs for each kid, and we're trying to figure out what. We can't put everything for a teacher all in a one big bubble, and say, you should know, um, so I would suggest that it's a way to do some back, some feedback, and then. Right away, try to get support, don't wait until the next professional development, because it might be the difference between how this school, the the classroom is running, and not just for the fact they might be missing a little piece. Anything else?
Oh.
Nothing else? Go ahead, Danielle.
I, it sounded to me like you were sort of talking about, uh, future P D plans for some of these days around bringing people in and, uh, the collaborative time, how, how far ahead are you sort of in terms of planning for those days, and what your P D plan is for the, for the year?
Um, we have restorative practices for September and October, we have C E I training for, um, November.
Do you have like a chart or something you'd be willing to share every year?
Yeah. Actually, we started one.
Oh, and then.
And then we have, um, yeah, we're sketching out, and then we have, um, early literacy, um, you went through that E L A. Quick limb review last year, so we're really, um, talked about, I'm looking at the science reading, and how we've been embedding some of that, and needing to do some P D around that, so we're over season six, and they'll be over at Parkway, um, for. Um, every P D day except for the November and then the February P D day about the year, or a shorter amount of time, they're only gonna be there for half day, um, because we still want to continue that culture work, and then also provide staff with their two hours.
So, um, now, so what I suggest is that you click that link, you can update, so they can go back and forth, because you are moving this and you're, you're adding or changing whatever it is. Before you can always go back to that link and see what has been done and 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 what is in the future.
And we want to leave a couple hours of some flexibility, because based on some of this system work that we're looking at, or look force, we may have to provide an additional, you know, like slide in of of the additional P D here or supports, um, for classroom teachers, especially at over here at Glen Hills, and that should two blocks initially, so we want to make sure that we have, um. Some flexibility in some of that, we need to provide some position support.
So I do have a document that I'll look to the update, just knowing that it's working. But it does have, when those focus, Parkway focus, it's got some of the.
What the, um, doing what, or do you have like, when you're bringing in people versus like, who's cheap, like, I'm always curious about all when you actually, maybe I took like, uh.
I, yeah, just to jump on your bandwagon.
Yeah.
I think a lot of families are, I think there's a real positive side to transparency, um, people always wonder, I've heard many times, I've been, what are teachers doing today? And, you know, that kind of negative mindset about public school teachers, right, because teachers, if families know, this is what teachers are working on today, um, on this day, that your kids at home harassing you, right? It can make a real. It's a really nice piece of transparency and engagement.
You can add that to Facebook and all.
Yeah, just something to think about, I don't know if that's part of your communication.
I think I communicate that a lot too. Yeah, yes. Absolutely.
Community gave us the time, so.
Yeah. Sorry to spotlight.
No, 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 I just have, that was a good question, um, this is, I don't know. Think about the handbooks and the behavioral metrics, this is just a general question that I was hoping to, uh, answer to this section, that would talk about the buildings, but how are, how, how do we get, are these handbooks, these behavioral metrics? Needs getting to families, like, is there, is there an expectation that they acknowledge receipt of them, or that families aren't know, I just personally don't, don't know, like, how do I, well, I get a copy of the Parkway handbook, is it Parkway yet, like, uh? Do you guys know that?
Part of the, the.
The on infinite campus?
Yep, so there was, I, I read the official map.
That I had it or read it? I haven't even gone to elbow for the read, I'm so sorry, that is very daunting, so.
Um, you're absolutely right.
And I repeat, do it forever.
It's so.
So, and. Each of this school had their handbook.
Oh, okay, well.
But I think there is also.
Well, it should be on the website, I'm sure it is on the website, we talked about making sure it's easy to find, I just, okay, I don't know, I think that that's a really easy thing for people to gloss over, to click and say, and and not read it.
I would always wish back because.
Yeah, but we've made changes, so you're, you know, if you're not in the know that it's been changed, and there's new expectations, I would highlight it, I would, I would want families to buy it on it.
Yes, and you don't need the verification?
I don't do the verification for a reason, but I'm. I can't, I don't want to hand or word them to.
Okay. Glenn Hill's letter.
No, it's a big email, it's on August first, with the behavior measures.
Okay.
Highlighted in the handbook for families, she highlighted.
Okay, I didn't get that.
Yeah, they were pretty solid email, kind of big, okay, for middle school parents.
What's going on?
This stuff, this work's been done, this change, here's the handbook.
That's it, okay.
There is a place for me to. Like, okay, thank you for that, but I didn't think that's anything just.
All right, all the.
Hold on, finish your.
That's it, I just, that was just something to think about.
I would say an attention to email, letters, and that type of. This is probably to school pickup and drop off. Biggest problem for parents now. So. But I kind of will take care of.
Good, cool.
And we have multiple places, then from the Facebook perspective, we have over here and here. And also here, when they come and say they don't talk. They, they cover the races.
Cool, okay. I don't know. What would the students have, I'm just about to. Oh, perhaps. Yeah, and I. We're ready to go, it was a great time to. Just reiterate this, this is where it lives. Thank you, I'm done.
I, yeah, I have a, alright. Couple questions and thoughts, just to share with you since you're here. I continue to just ruminate and worry about the, the, what culture, climate and training works like, looks like. Particularly as I think about how Parkway and Glen Hills, they, they don't seem to be working together. Each schoolhouse is kind of working on its own front, right? At, at least that's what it feels like. You've got kind of different models and different words and all that. And I, so I just continue to wonder what happens when you don't coordinate that effort and you have kids transitioning from one building to another. And I know that's a big, big issue. But I, I think it's something to ruminate on. Because I, I see that there's a culture committee at Parkway. And I guess that committee is leading the culture and climate work, right? But there's not a, that's a separate committee, right, from whatever is going on at Glen Hills. And so sometimes I ask, you know, it's the same old question, how do the same kids go from Parkway? Angels, and yes, they're growing up in their teenagers and they come over to Glen Hills. They're not angels anymore, but you know, it should be the same culture, it's just for older kids. So I just, I worry about that because I think that's confusing when you go into fourth grade and you're in a new building and now there's different words posted that you're supposed to be. Different values, you know, it just looks different, it feels different. I think you should. It's something to ponder, I'm pondering on it. The second thing I've been just pondering on is where the SST experts in our schoolhouses are fitting into meeting PD, including like what I think of as in class. Right? It's like SEL teaching embedded in classrooms with our SST experts leading that. So I don't know if that's happening in this before school PD or what the plan is to make that happen as part of that development model around SCL.
That's, that is happening, so Kelly is working with that team. Just first looking at, you know, the second sub curriculum and then also providing, you know, getting some resources together. And then also kind of talking through, what is that going to look like for us to do some coaching support within classrooms?
Okay, so that's ambition that Kelly and her team would be into classroom as opposed to kids being pulled out.
And what we, what we were hoping is that it would just be sort of like baby support in some ways. So their SST team is doing a lot of planning right now because beginning of the year, it's really support teachers. But eventually then going in the right, doing it with them and eventually.
Right, I mean, that's the ideal, is that the teacher grows into that.
Yeah.
And then the SST. And we'll just move on to it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
She's not.
Yeah, that's great.
And you're going to move on to. Buildings and grounds.
Good evening, good afternoon, good evening tonight. So this is for Good Hope, the work started last morning. Two repairs, I think, Good Hope, Mr. Beck, the name box, and your capital plan. And this is still following the schedule. And we have those deteriorations in the group, starting to leak and being very soft. And so we received some updated quotes from the company that they had, that had been last morning. So the quote I attached to the board, and we're just looking to move forward with that hopefully before we care. Just because. So, styling up a very soft group, we are trying to avoid any potential expenses. And just reiterating because it is a whole building, it would be.
Have a motion.
So moved.
I need a motion. I'll move just. Move to approve Nancy's request.
Yeah, the executive sometimes.
Um, I. I got, I got.
The good, the good help group.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Also, thank you. We have a motion. Audience. I think. They're right, they're, they're very participation, I could find if you would. You just keep looking at me like. Any discussion on the board? We'll have a vote, all in favor of.
Aye.
New room. Five to zero vote. We are, as president, update, I have seen two or three things. One, policy should be finished and you should be getting your public support. Policies. And you should start to work with our skill, I think that meeting on our, our, uh, September tenth. Should be finished by August thirty first.
Thirty first.
You guys should have any time.
Yeah.
It's on Saturday. Ooh, I've got it on weekend. Uh, we are reading here. In the. So that's that. Second, I just want to bring up something that will be, we're not going to discuss it, but we're going to be bringing up a feature topic, which is salary of the parent. Talked about teachers a lot. No one has said, you can go on the parents, and parents are like, kind of like, figure what else? So we're going to have a discussion about bringing those salaries up and you could look at comparable comparables. But that's just FYI. I am going to try to get all in hand again. It must have been some previous expectations, she, she was going to say, I don't know what happened or why she didn't call in, but you never know what happened. Tomorrow, we are having a, a policy meeting, the only thing on the policy agenda will be, it's about the equity committee. We are, and I actually put this on our, on the agenda and I hope it's noticed correctly. Where we are going to pick, we haven't gotten, we were supposed to get to. All zones. One called me, said that she won't, she'll have it by tomorrow, another one said she'll have it by around tonight. But they're proposed on what they thought. The rest of the ship would be like. Um, we are going to bring it through a policy committee. And then, but the request is that you allow policy to work. Out of having to bring it back to the board, up through whatever budget amount. That's why we lost our people the last time because we wanted to admit and pick and, and do and not make a sound commitment. And they forgot, now we're going through this whole system again. Where you just got to rely on some people saying, we're gonna look at this and we will bring it to the board. We can make a decision. So I guess. And there is some discussion, which I have. Ah, never mind. But that is an action item that I did, I hope it's, if we did know this.
It says it's recommended, we can discuss the equity. Just on the equity committee and possibly the years.
That the board will authorize authorization to.
Will authorize the committee to. No, that's not what I, no, no, I wanted, because we have fifteen thousand dollars that is set aside for this. We are going to look at the, we know with our projects, we, we got the, what do you call it? We got the survey. We read the twenty, all should have read the twenty plus page of report. Now we have sent that report to two consultants and say, what does it look like in this round?
Oh, not the same people, no, different.
We, we, they're, they're busy now.
The board needs to authorize the committee, which is a minority, to act on its own.
That's what I'm trying to get the board to do.
What I said, so the board will act, and that's what Danielle said. So the board will act to authorize.
Yes, right, but you have to authorize us to figure out what we're going to do first.
And it would be the policy committee, not the equity committee. And what even committee is that? Oh, it's a subcommittee.
Yes.
So at our next meeting, the board will be asked to give this authority for the committee.
Now, at this meeting, we would like the board to give.
Oh, right now? Into that now, because it's not noticed.
It was noted.
Since it's recommended, the board discussed to possible action on any. And then it says equity committee.
You know what, never mind, it just seems like every single time we talk about this equity committee and getting something down, we have to double check the bulk, what people put it down. I've been working on it and I, yes, I am ticked off because I've been trying to get this equity meeting committee on, going on since before Danielle got on. Then last year, we had this back and forth, back and forth. We've lost the people who did some great work in getting that information because we tried to split it up. And now what we're trying to do is make sure that we do some work with, get some help to provide, facilitate and do what we need to do, and now we're going to have to wait another.
I think, I'll make, so make a motion.
Yeah, so just wait for a motion, so what we're.
I know, but it's.
I would make a motion to authorize the policy committee to, uh, to approve of a facilitator for equity committee work within the already approved equity committee's budget. Which I believe is currently twelve thousand. Oh, it is fifteen. So, yes, take back the last part. Authorize the board to approve equity committee's selection of facilitator.
Policy.
Sorry. Authorize the board to somebody else.
I, I make a motion to authorize the policy committee to make a decision on the equity. Facilitators. To, to consultants to proceed with the equity work that will be done for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty. Within the already, within the already approved fifteen thousand dollars budget.
You can work that right, fine.
Alright.
The most practically is also authorizing the policy committee to make this.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Because I'm on this.
Yeah. So that's a way, that's a motion. We go to, wait, we go, second Friday, yeah, audience. Board. Discussion.
Is it going to be a stipend?
Let me first, yeah.
And it's a maximum. And it's also over there, we have to come back to the board.
So basically tomorrow, they're here to write two proposals to policy. We just want policy to be able to say we're going with this proposal.
And not get the power, right, but if we get the policies tomorrow.
I mean.
But we also are talking about, even if we don't get the proposals yet, because they.
We want to start with the planning of what we're going to do and then.
Yeah. But, uh, with some work in practice, are we starting meeting? Are we going to start a policy together? We need to start that work.
Yeah.
I, I just have to go on market here, I mean, I, I feel what you're saying to me, that I think it's really important. I know that the work needs to be done. But this item does not specifically address the possibility delegating board function to a committee and there's been no notice on.
Right, we're going to move to table, I move to table.
No.
I know, because I'm going to move the table, the, the discussion about the equity committee and the, the money. I'm just going to, I'm not in, and this happens every time, I'm going to make a motion to table this. And would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
First and second, all in favor to table, oh, discussion. All of this table, the equity plans of this particular board. They are.
Aye.
I don't understand. We're tabling it, we're moving it to identify next month, so if you need push top. Yes, and that's what I'm waiting to see. Ben, do you have a question?
I don't know.
I'm going to explain it very, very cleanly and I, um, and I need to bring it down because I'm, I'm heated on this particular subject because it happens all the time, but this, what is it? The policy committee is an, I mean, uh, the equity committee is an. Previously, last year, in it's October, I think it was, we got a group and we approved a partial part of their work.
Yeah, the first survey and recommendation.
Right, right, recommendation.
That needs to, we would understand the.
Right, so we, what's, what happened was instead of getting them to contract the whole thing, it's with them. But they cannot do it now because they have other work, so we have to start over.
Well, we're looking. So. And we, I, the way I see a facilitator is somebody who's going to now take the committee.
Right.
And walk us through the work of the recommendations of that survey and moderate that and also help us form guidelines, we're at schools and up there.
Which is what we were supposed to on the, the second half, but now we have to find other.
Okay, so.
So now we have, we have put aside fifteen thousand dollars in our budget for this work.
Yeah.
We have our policy meeting tomorrow. If we don't, I think we should have our, our proposals and they will be on board now.
Yeah.
If it's not, then we are still wanting to work through what that looked like.
Okay, so if we're going to table this, why don't we just?
We can vote the table.
So, so what's best practice in terms of, um, um, delegating expenditures?
We've never had a.
With a budget. People are just delegating.
I understand, I mean, we're just trying.
If you, if you'd like to table it, why don't you just get the proposals tomorrow? And then we can have a special school meeting for five minutes and approve it the next day or something.
We can't even, yeah, but how is there, I mean, I'm just being.
What happened last time is it took us several months to get approval for our consultants because it went through committee, then board, then back to committee, then board ends up timing and scheduling. So the, the idea was to ask for some flexibility and support so the committee could move forward with that facilitator.
So is it?
We got the proposal.
Is it allowed that a policy committee determines the stipend?
The stipend's already determined.
No, no, sorry, sorry. You, you said the owner says to, you're asking to approve their proposal stipend. Right?
That week in higher, resident higher.
Yeah, so, so I'm saying, is it, is it allowed for a policy committee to just approve that stipend?
I believe that. If we decide.
It's, it's a two-person minority, there, you need a forum to take an action. And then I, an expenditure, not same thing as budget.
But didn't we used to take action items in the committees?
The only action we ever did was send something up to, uh.
That's why let's table it.
Oh.
We can table it, I, this is the one thing that I am absolutely baffled out. Out of every single, every single thing we have ever talked about, we don't have issues with it. But every time it comes to equity, we have to keep pushing it back, keep pushing it back. We have done. We did block twice. Block, um, what is it, block scheduling? We had two or three. We did block twice, block, um what is it, block scheduling, we had two or three different ones. This is the seventh time this has come up. Seven, and we had more, less discussion on block scheduling than trying to get equity and inclusion work in here.
So for me, uh I just, I I just, I I'm just muted if I've heard the prior discussions. I understand, I'm just wondering about the legality and. So maybe Dan can, it's just.
I I I didn't bring this up just without talking to Dan, yeah, so I asked Dan about it, but go ahead.
Is there a possibility that we can find ten minutes next week that everybody can agree right now, so that when you have proposals, we know we'll all be there and?
Yeah, we do this week.
Well, look, we don't know.
That'll be Friday.
And when do, when we do it? What day?
Tuesday at five.
I have a training from five to nine on Monday, I have a training five to nine on Tuesday, I have a training five to nine on Wednesday. I have a training. Five to nine, five to nine.
Five A M to nine.
Five P M to nine, yeah.
Well, if you don't care, I'm on my cell phone, I can come on it, like, can we do it Friday morning this week? We're gonna have a proposal with committee work presented. I call it, I don't know if I can.
Can we, I mean.
We need four, we need three for a forum, right?
We need three for a forum, I could do Friday at four fifteen.
If we don't have.
Well, then we can do it next week.
That's why we should table it and we'll bring it up.
Tuesday morning, seven thirty.
Two, oh, I can't do Tuesday, oh, wait, seven thirty.
I could do seven thirty A M on Tuesday. The thirtieth, the thirtieth, let's get this show.
We'll obviously resume some quick.
Yeah, please.
Gonna have a vote on table.
Three ayes. Alright.
It's three ayes, which is um Andy Franklin, Ben Wen and Carla, thank you, Chris, I'm a no, you know.
No.
Two no's, three to. I still move, it doesn't mean I have to vote for it.
You voted aye.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you changed it.
No, I, it's changed, but anyway, let's go on to. And give us what they need to know and what we need to know and any managers that I have better than that. Second, move to five, Ben Wen, second by Carla, Carla cross out in favor.